Well, hello everyone and welcome. Thank you for joining MAST DEP's public hearing for the air quality plan approval proposed decision for the Northeast Energy Center in Charlton. For much of tonight's hearing, we will refer to the Northeast Energy Center as NEC. Before we begin, I'm going to introduce our speakers and share our contact information. My name is Douglas Fine. I'm the Deputy Regional Director for the Bureau of Air and Waste at MAST DEP's Central Regional Office. Also presenting tonight is A.J. Jablinowski. He's a PE from Epsilon Associates. And Mr. Jablinowski is the applicant's Principal Environmental Consultant for the NEC project. Before we begin, I'd like to inform all participants that this entire proceeding is being recorded for the public record. I want to start by welcoming you all and thanking you for your participation in tonight's hearing on MAST DEP's proposed air permit for this project. Note that the regulatory name for a MAST DEP air permit is a plan approval, and you will hear both those terms used interchangeably tonight. You'll see from our agenda that we're going to start with me going over some Zoom logistics so that everything can run smoothly. Next, Mr. Jablinowski will present information about NEC's air permit application, and his presentation will include a summary of the proposed project and key components of the air permit application. Then I'll come back and I'll summarize MAST DEP's proposed decision on the air permit, as well as the process and deadline for public comment on MAST DEP's proposed permit. After that, we'll take any and all oral testimony on MAST DEP's draft permit, all of which will be entered into the formal record, and all testimony, oral testimony, will be considered a formal public comment. I will summarize the next steps prior to closing tonight's hearing. Thank you, and let's get started. All right, a few logistics on the Zoom features and how the hearing will run. First, in order to minimize background noise, all attendees have been put on mute until the hearing is open for oral testimony. If you're having any difficulty with any Zoom feature, please use the chat option at the bottom of the screen, and someone else from the MAST DEP team will attempt to assist you. Please do not use the chat feature to submit testimony. Tonight's hearing is not an opportunity to get questions answered about the proposed project or about the draft MAST DEP air permit. If you do have questions, please include them in your oral testimony tonight or via your written comments, and those questions will be addressed in a written response to comments that will accompany MAST DEP's final decision on the air permit application. Now I will turn over the presentation to Mr. Jablinowski from Epsilon Associates.
Good evening, folks. If I handled Zoom right, you should now see my title slide, Northeast Energy Center LLC. Good. Thank you for joining us. This is the applicant presentation portion of the public hearing for the Northeast Energy Center LLC proposed plan approval application. My name is A.J. Jablinowski. I represent Epsilon Associates, the environmental consultant for the project. This presentation will start with an introduction and project overview. I'll give some project context and go through the plan approval requirements and how the proposed plan approval meets those requirements. I will also review the rest of the citing and licensing process for the project and the community outreach that has occurred to date. Liberty Energy Trust, a developer of the project, is an infrastructure financing and development firm focused on liquefied natural gas, renewable natural gas, energy infrastructure for peak shaving, which is reducing energy loads at times of peak demand, and energy storage and transportation. I am representing the environmental consultant at Epsilon Associates on this project. Epsilon has headquarters in Maynard, Mass., and has supported the licensing of energy industrial and commercial projects for 25 years. Weston and Sampson is the owner's engineer, and Pierce Atwood is the Regulatory Citing Council. The purpose of the facility is to provide pre-treatment liquefaction, storage, and truck loading service for Commonwealth utilities. The project has gone through the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act, MEPA, and Energy Facility Siting Board, EFSP, processes, along with this MAST DEP review and the local review through the Charleston Conservation Commission. The project is expected to complete construction and be in operation by the spring of 2023. This overhead view shows the project area with north pointing toward the right of the page. The NEC facility is located on Route 169 in Charlton and is towards the left of the page. Neighbors include Incom Inc., a fiber optics manufacturer, and a utility-scale solar array. To the north is the Millennium Power Plant. The facility site plan is shown here and is available in the application materials. MAST DEP will present instructions on how to find those materials. This is a simplified process flow diagram that's also in the application materials. Again, the purpose is to liquefy natural gas to make it suitable for storage. Natural gas comes to the plant through the interconnection pipeline and gets cleaned before liquefaction. The clean gas then enters the cold box, which works the same way a refrigerator works. Nitrogen is used as the refrigerant. LNG is stored in the liquefied natural gas storage tank, which works like a very large thermos. So why is this project happening? In the Northeast and Mid-Atlantic U.S., natural gas is used more in the wintertime, both for peak winter electricity generation and for home and business heating. In this diagram, the red line represents gas demand, and the purple line shows pipeline capacity. Typically, in the summertime, there's excess pipeline capacity. When demand is high, it is supplemented using LNG. Up to 40% of the Commonwealth's gas supply can be LNG during peak winter demand. The goal of the project is to take underutilized pipeline capacity that already exists during the summer, use that to generate local LNG which can be reintroduced into the distribution system during peak winter needs. LNG takes up 600 times less space than natural gas and can be stored for long periods. National Grid is NEC's main customer. National Grid is a key regional gas distribution utility, and NEC's domestically-produced LNG will help National Grid meet its customers' needs and hourly fluctuations in demand, maintain supply pressure during peak periods, and provide resiliency to areas where there is only a single connection to the natural gas system. There's an environmental benefit to having natural gas liquefied and available for use during winter cold snaps. During the end of 2017 and the beginning of 2018, there was a particularly ferocious polar vortex. Many power generators switched to oil firing, and air emissions went up manyfold, as shown for nitrogen oxides in this graph. Using dirtier fuels and less efficient generators caused a similar spike in greenhouse gas emissions. This past winter, Houston, Texas, had a cold snap causing emissions spikes and power failures, leading to a lot of damage and hardship. The use of LNG can allow facilities to continue to use natural gas rather than switch to dirtier fuels. Now I'm going to describe the Massachusetts Non-Major Comprehensive Plan Approval, which covers both air and noise. The facility is subject to this plan approval requirements based on the potential to emit emissions from natural gas combustion. Actual emissions will be lower. The application submitted by NEC documents compliance with all federal and Massachusetts air quality regulations. The DEP review extended over a year and included several requests for supplemental information. Key elements of that review focused on documenting that we have best available control technology for air emissions, documenting compliance with ambient air standards, and documenting compliance with MAST DEP noise requirements and policy. The proposed approval contains monitoring, record-keeping, testing, and reporting requirements to document ongoing compliance with each of those key points. Through the application process, NEC documented that emissions will be minimized through facility and equipment design, the use of clean fuels, good combustion practices, facility operating procedures, and best management practices. Beyond that, I'll talk a little bit about the new hybrid drive technology associated with this project. This will actually operate like a hybrid vehicle, such as a Toyota Prius. Having a gas turbine and an electric motor operating together will allow NEC to run its combustion turbine at its optimum efficiency, which is also its minimum emission rate. When there is less demand for the mechanical engine energy needed to run the nitrogen refrigeration cycle, extra capacity in the turbine can turn the motor as a generator to generate electricity. When the refrigeration cycle requires more energy than the turbine can output, the electric motor can supply additional power using grid electricity. Overall, this means the job can get done with a smaller combustion turbine. That smaller turbine has lower emissions and quieter operation. This will be the first installation of such technology in the U.S., and we expect that it will set a new standard for efficiency. The proposed facility will not cause or significantly contribute to any condition of air pollution. EPA develops and maintains national ambient air quality standards, including primary standards, to protect human health, including the health of sensitive populations such as asthmatics, children, and the elderly. MAST DEP does something similar with air toxics, setting long-term and short-term outdoor concentration guidelines that are protective of public health. NEC and Epsilon use computer air dispersion modeling to predict ambient air concentrations at thousands of locations near the facility using five years of weather data and assuming worst-case maximum allowable emission rates from the emission sources at the facility. The model results show that all pollutants and all averaging times are below the national ambient air quality standards and well below the MAST DEP pipeline levels. This modeling was done following a MAST DEP-approved protocol, and the modeling results were reviewed and approved by MAST DEP. Through the design of the process and through the MAST DEP review of the design, NEC took steps to reduce noise impacts that included positioning the equipment to minimize the sound impacts at receptors. The facility will use custom mitigation silencers on the combustion turbine, sound attenuating enclosures, low-noise fans, and a 20-foot-tall sound barrier along the eastern side of the property. Additionally, the hybrid technology allows the use of a smaller turbine which reduces overall project noise. Based on their review of our sound level measurements and modeling, MAST DEP's proposed plan approval says that the facility incorporates sound suppression and sound transmission prevention elements that constitute necessary equipment, service, and maintenance, and necessary precautions to prevent unnecessary sound emissions. The proposed plan approval allows for the retrofit of a second sound barrier along the southern side of the property if additional mitigation is needed to avoid impacts to the south. There will be testing done post-construction to see if that retrofit is necessary. MAST DEP is only one part of the overall permitting licensing for the project. The Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act Office has issued its certificate on the environmental notification form for the project. The Charlton Conservation Commission has issued an order of conditions authorizing work while protecting wetlands and ecologically sensitive areas. MAST DOT has issued the highway access permit allowing driveways for entrance and egress. The Energy Facility Siting Board has concluded its discovery and testimony, and they are completing their order for the project. There are no significant water or wastewater uses, and there will be no underground storage tanks. There's been significant outreach over the course of the project. Much of this can be found in detail at the project's website, including meetings such as this one and other formal and less formal meetings through the different permitting and licensing processes. That's included MEPA, EFSP, and Town Hall Host Community meetings. There was public notice for the MEPA ENF and a virtual public consultation session with MEPA. The Energy Facility Siting Board had mailings to neighbors, two hearings in the local area, and six days of public evidentiary hearings. Meetings were held at public locations or online outside of typical work hours. Public notices were provided in English and Spanish. Outreach meetings have included open-house meetings with multiple departments within the town of Charlton, outreach with Sturbridge and Southbridge, and meetings with state representatives and the state senator serving the region. Again, there is more detail on the project's website. MAST DEP will be explaining how to provide public comment on the proposed plan approval. If you do have any questions, Boris Brevnov, the manager of NEC, is listening in, and his email address is here. And there is a contact page at the project website. Thank you, and with that, I will be turning the presentation back over to MAST DEP.
Thank you, Mr. Jablinowski. I'm going to resume my screen sharing. All right. So now I'll provide some background on MAST DEP's air permit review process. MAST DEP received the NEC air quality plan approval application in March of 2020. We've been working on the review of this application, which has included communication with the proponent to address questions that arose during our review. The first step in the review process for all MAST DEP air plan approval application reviews is the administrative review. This involves checking to make sure all the necessary documents and information were included in the application. The second step in MAST DEP's review of applications is the technical review. This is where MAST DEP reviews the design and operation of the proposed equipment and processes to ensure that all applicable air pollution regulations and standards are satisfied. MAST DEP issued a public decision, I'm sorry. MAST DEP issued a proposed decision on the application and an associated notice of public comment and notice of public hearing on July 8, 2021. The public comment period began on that same day and will close at 5:00 PM on Monday, August 9, 2021. It is during this period that the public is invited to submit written comments, as well as oral testimony tonight, to MAST DEP on our proposed decision. The public notice included instructions for submitting comments. I will discuss the public comment period and the comment process in more detail in a few slides. Now I'll talk more about MAST DEP's review and proposed decision on the application, much of which will echo what has already been presented by Mr. Jablinowski when he was discussing the application. During MAST DEP's review of any permit air application, we ensure that the facility, the proposed facility, will comply with all state and federal air quality regulations. The proposed NEC facility requires a non-major comprehensive air plan approval because the nitrogen oxide and the carbon monoxide emissions will potentially be over 10 tons per year. The proposed facility is also subject to federal requirements found in the National Primary and Secondary Ambient Air Quality Standards and in standards of performance for new stationary sources. In addition, MAST DEP regulations require the review and application of the best available control technology known as BACT for the criteria pollutants and also for noise. The criteria pollutants are six pollutants that can be harmful to human health and the environment, and the criteria pollutants are defined in both federal and state air quality laws. The criteria pollutants that will be emitted from the NEC project are: nitrogen oxide, sulfur dioxide, carbon monoxide, and particulate matter. The best available control technology is identified using a five-step review process, which is as follows. Step one, identify all control technologies. Step two, eliminate technically infeasible options. Step three, rank remaining control technologies by control efficiency. Step four, evaluate the most cost-effective controls and document those results. And then step five is selecting BACT. In addition, air emissions modeling performed by NEC for criteria pollutants and for toxics air pollutants indicates that those emissions from the facility will be below the applicable standards. Modeling and other work done by NEC also indicates that the sound impacts to nearby residences and businesses will be in compliance with MAST DEP air regulations on noise. MAST DEP's proposed decision is that the NEC project, as proposed in the application, can be granted an air permit, also known as an air plan approval. It is this MAST DEP proposed decision, or our draft permit, that's out for public comment now. I will now summarize the elements of MAST DEP's proposed air permit. Our proposed air permit includes identification of all equipment and processes that emit regulated air pollutants and short- and long-term emission limits for regulated air pollutants. Note that the regulated air pollutants include nitrogen oxide, carbon monoxide, carbon dioxide, particulate matter, volatile organic compounds, sulfur dioxide, and hazardous air pollutants. Additionally, there are limits on the opacity from stacks and on total fuel burning. MAST DEP's proposed decision also requires measures to reduce off-site sound, such as sound barrier wall, acoustical enclosures around the highest sound emitting components, stack and inlet silencers, and a site layout designed to reduce off-site sound. MAST DEP's proposed decision requires that fugitive natural gas emissions from all components in gas service will be minimized through implementation of an ongoing leak detection and repair program. Included in the MAST DEP's proposed decision are monitoring, testing, record-keeping, and reporting requirements that are necessary to ensure that the facility will operate in compliance with applicable regulations and with applicable air quality plan approval requirements or the permit requirements. Examples of these requirements include continuous monitoring of fuel use, monitoring of operating hours, periodic emission testing, which includes stack testing as well as post-construction sound testing, record-keeping, and ongoing compliance reports that need to be submitted to MAST DEP. As previously mentioned, MAST DEP completed our review of the air quality plan approval application and issued a proposed decision and public notice which triggered the start of the public comment period on July 8, 2021. MAST DEP created a fact sheet on the proposed project and the agency's proposed permitting decision, and MAST DEP translated both the public notice and the fact sheet into Spanish. MAST DEP emailed the public notice and the fact sheet in both Spanish and English to interested stakeholders at the start of the public comment period. Stakeholders that MAST DEP contacted included the Town Administrator Town Manager's Office in both Charlton and Southbridge, as well as the Boards of Health, Boards of Selectment or Town Council, and Planning Boards for both of those communities. We also emailed the public notice and fact sheet to all of the entities that commented on the proposed NEC project during the MEPA review process. In addition, we sent the fact sheet and public notice to a handful of community organizations with interest in environmental matters and racial equity. The proposed air plan approval, the application materials, and the public notice documents can be found electronically online at MAST DEP's website at the link displayed on this slide. For those who would like to see a paper copy of these documents, they can be found at the Charlton Public Library and at the Jacob Edwards Library in Southbridge, and all this information was included in our public notice. Please contact MAST DEP if you seek translation of any of the materials into a language other than English. You can submit written comments to MAST DEP by 5:00 PM on August 9 in three different ways. You can submit your comments online at the link shown here. You can submit written comments via email by mailing them to cero.air@mast.gov, and that email address is shown. Or you can mail your written comments by US Mail and send those to MAST DEP Central Regional Office in Worcester. And again, the address is shown here with, and please indicate attention, NEC air permit. The next few slides will show how to enter the MAST DEP web portal to either view MAST DEP's proposed decision and the application materials or to comment on our proposed decision. If you enter the web address shown on the previous slide into the address bar on your web browser, you'll be taken to the MAST DEP web portal. Once on the MAST DEP web portal, you will see an orange search and comment button that is shown on this slide. Then you click the orange search and/or comment button to advance to the next screen. This brings you to a page where you can view all applications open for public comment. After clicking on that orange button, you will see this screen, which provides a list of applications for permits that are currently open for public comment. At this screen, you choose the Northeast Energy Center application. Once you choose the Northeast Energy Center application, you will be able to see all of the application documents as well as MAST DEP's proposed decision. If you scroll down to the bottom of that page, you will see the "Submit a Comment" option. The "Submit a Comment" page will look like this. To submit a comment on the proposed decision, you must fill in the following fields. The title of the document you're commenting on, the comments you wish to submit, your name, and your email address. Please note that all information submitted via this portal is considered public and may be published online by MAST DEP. After the public comment period, MAST DEP will consider and address any and all comments received about MAST DEP's proposed decision. To receive email notice of MAST DEP's final decision, please contact the MAST DEP Regional Air Quality Permit Chief, Tom Hanna, at the email address shown on the screen. When MAST DEP issues the final approval or denial of NEC's application, a 21-day appeal period will begin. During the appeal period, an adjudicatory hearing may be requested by those individuals or groups that have standing. The right to appeal information will be included with MAST DEP's final decision. The rules for appeals can be found at 310 CMR 7.51, Section 1, and at 310 CMR 1.01. Note that any appeal must be filed within 21 days of MAST DEP's issuance of our final decision. In addition, the right to appeal requires legal standing as outlined in the regulations. In order to preserve your right to appeal, an appellant must comment on MAST DEP's proposed decision during the public comment period in order to have standing. I also want to remind you that MAST DEP cannot issue its final decision until the Massachusetts Energy Facility Siting Board has made its final decision on the proposed NEC project. We will shortly open the floor for oral testimony on MAST DEP's proposed air permit. We would like to first start by calling on federal or state public officials who want to submit oral testimony. We will then call on local officials who wish to submit oral testimony. After that, oral testimony will be open to anyone else participating. To submit oral testimony, you raise your hand by selecting your name in the participant panel and then choosing "Raise Hand." For many on a desktop computer tonight, that will be docked at the bottom of your screen as shown in your slide here. For those who are joining tonight on an iPhone or an Android, you will find the "Raise Hand" command under the "More." you will find the raise hand command under the more option. If there are multiple hands raised simultaneously, we will do our best to get to you in the order that you raise your hand. If you cannot figure out how to raise your hand and you would like to submit oral testimony, please tell us in chat and we will attempt to provide further guidance. In order to ensure that everyone gets a chance to speak, please limit your oral testimony to three minutes or less. Please remember that anyone is able to submit written testimony, regardless of whether you choose to or are able to make oral testimony tonight. Remember that testimony and comments and as well as questions that are submitted are limited to MAST DEP's NEC air quality plan approval proposed decision. Remember also that tonight is not a question and answer session. MAST DEP will answer any questions received during tonight's hearing in a written response to comments that will accompany our final decision. Now is the time for any federal or state official who wishes to give oral testimony to raise their hand. All right. I apologize, a little technical difficulty there. Can you see the screen still? Just give me a moment, please. Okay, I'm back. Thank you. All right, next, we invite any local officials who wish to comment tonight to raise their hand.
Okay, we're going to start with Mike Marquetti. You should see a bubble pop up on your screen asking you to unmute yourself, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. My name is Mike Marquetti. I live in Southbridge, Mass. I'm also an elected official, Southbridge Town Council. I oppose this facility mainly because, first of all, this facility would be within a one-mile radius of the Southbridge landfill and the Millennium Power Plant. The residents in that area have fought a 10-year battle with landfill operator, residents on Barefoot Road and Eleanor Lane because of the contamination that the landfill produced in that area, not just in the water but also in the air. Now, you have the landfill that is also releasing methane into the air. You have the Millennium Power Plant, which produces a toxic plume. I say toxic, I really don't know what's in that plume, but it does release a large amount of smoke in the air almost every day. So now you have three facilities where within a one-mile radius of each other that have a detrimental impact on the environment. Now, they say that LNG is safe, but it seems to me that just one little accident and it could be, it could be ignite a catastrophic accident up there and from the methane coming from the landfill and whatever is coming from Millennium. I don't know if that would happen, but it could happen. And with three facilities within a one-mile radius, it's not a good plan as far as I'm concerned. You also have residents who live next to this facility and across the street from the facility, and they have fought a 10-year battle of all the increased traffic on 169, which also is detrimental to the air quality of the area. 169 is not a very, not a very wide road. It's not a very safe road, a lot of accidents on that road. So now you want to increase traffic again on a road that has had a lot of traffic over the years because of the Southbridge landfill. Southbridge has enough problems right now with public safety. We have a hard time staffing our fire station. We have a hard time paying for a lot of the things. And now you want to add something else that's even going to cause more public safety problems. And I know that Southbridge is going to have to deal with a lot of it. You say that you've got a lot of oversight over this facility, but for a long time, a good five to 10 years, there were a lot of problems reported up at the landfill that were never attended to until finally the residents started to speak out and started to demand that MAST DEP looked into it. And I give you credit for finally stepping in and stopping the Southbridge landfill. But with a track record like that, it makes us very distrustful of having now another facility, like I said, within a one-mile radius of each other. Another facility that's going to cause a detrimental effect could cause a detrimental effect to the environment. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Marquetti. The next speaker we have in line is Ms. John Palowski. So I'm going to now unmute you, and you have the floor. John, can you unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. My name is John Palowski. I'm an elected official. I serve on the local vocational school committee, and I'm representing only myself in my comments. I'm not representing the school committee in any way. I made comments at the initial presentation. I'm not critical of the company that's coming in, nor am I particularly concerned about the environmental issues related to gas. It's one of the cleanest fuels. However, my biggest concern is the one opportunity for the state to perhaps consider a spur from either I-84 or I-90 to increase the safety for the local citizens and the drivers of these trucks. Our local congressman is the chairman of these, and he might be able to shake a tree or two in Washington and create funds that would not usually be accessible. Regarding the test that we're done with emissions, concerned the altitude.
John, we're having a little bit of trouble hearing you on our end. You're cutting in and out a little bit. I just wanted to let you know, I'm going to let you finish speaking, but if you also want to submit your comments written via that email or something, that would be helpful just so we have it for the complete record. Go ahead. John, are you still there? John, if you can hear us, you can use the chat button to let us know that you have more to say, but I can't hear you right now on our end. So we're just going to move on to the next commenters or testimony. If, John, if you get back on, just raise your hand or shoot us a message via the chat. But that was all of the local officials, I believe. So we're going to move on to anyone else who has oral testimony that they'd like to give tonight. This is the time to raise your hand, and we will get to you as best we can in the order that we see your hand raised. It looks like John Palowski's back. I think you're already unmuted, so go ahead and try to speak again. We'll see if we can hear you.
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm, like I said, I'm concerned about the combined emissions. Specifically, the hydrogen sulfide and the methane that continues to leak up from the landfill itself. It's the 405,000-ton elephant in the room, so to speak. That's how much garbage was going there daily. That's over 1,000 tons of garbage a day. It's going to continue to fester for a number of years because the landfill is somewhat dry but leaks a little water. Methane, one might, there might be an opportunity to actually chill the methane at our landfill and add it to your mix as a little side business. But as far as people inhaling methane, it is not oxidized. Or then we have the hydrogen sulfide is dangerous at level 10. And don't your preliminary test covers hydrogen sulfide at all? And I know your plant isn't bringing any hydrogen sulfide, but a little hydrogen sulfide plus your own gases that might escape. I'm not saying they will. I've studied the process that you folks are using. I think it's very promising. You may want to look at forcing other plants that are similar to use that process. I don't want to get in the way of progress and community jobs, but on the other hand, I don't want to see any stone unturned. And the altitude issue has me a little concerned. They're at very different levels, and I don't know if the gases coming out of the landfill would have even shown up where you were doing the testing at the lower altitude. But I appreciate having had the opportunity to speak, and I will send in additional comments through your process that you are kind enough to show with the viewers how to utilize. Thank you.
Thank you, John. I'm going to put you back on mute. I don't see any other hands raised now, but I will give it another minute or two. So if you do have comments that you would like to make during this time, please go ahead and raise your hand. If you can't figure out how to do that, again, you can always use the chat feature and we'll help you out. I see a hand from Jean, so I'm going to allow you to talk. And there should be a button that pops up on your screen asking you to unmute yourself. And go ahead and speak now. The floor is yours.
Hi, I am Jean Vincent, and I'm a member of the Charlton Planning Board. And I was just curious, I thought I heard you say that you, that no decision will be rendered until the Siting Board has given a decision. Did I understand that right?
Hello, this is Douglas Fine again. So as I explained earlier, in the public hearing format, we are not able to provide answers to questions. So you should feel free to ask any questions either through your oral testimony and or written comments that you submit, and we will respond to those in writing at the close when we're issuing our final decision. In addition, if you've got process questions, I'll be inviting anyone with process questions to follow up with either myself or with Tom Hanna, our air permit chief, at the end of our slideshow, and I'll show those contact information again. So you should hold that question, either consider it submitted to the record, or you can follow up as a process question with myself or Tom Hanna after the close of the hearing.
Thank you, Doug. Not seeing any more hands raised at this time. I do see John's hand up again, so since there's no one else in line, you can have another short amount of time. So I'm going to ask you to unmute yourself again.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the courtesy of allowing me. Just one other comment. I made it the first time. I have a concern because more Southbridge people live, we have more Southbridge people near this plant than Charlton people. And but the bigger concern, we learned during the Southbridge landfill days, I trust the people in Charlton impeccably. They're good people. They're as concerned as others are about the health issues and the like. But I don't feel the local government have the resources to oversee a complex plant like this that is worth, I believe, over $100 million. It's the type of thing that would need the resources that the state itself has. So in the future, that's considered when other plants like this are site assigned. I know you're not calling this a site assignment, but we just don't have the ability or the resources to either kindly send us a staff member 20 hours a week from the state to assist the local board or provide the money for the town to do the oversight. Because we just don't have the ability, even though we have some very smart people. They don't have the tools. They can't look out for the public future. Thank you so much.
Thank you, John. At this point, I'm going to turn the presentation back over to Doug to just close this out. I just want to thank you all for attending and for your comments.
All right. Thank you very much.
Okay, so a recording of tonight's hearing will be posted on MAST DEP's YouTube channel at the link shown on the screen. When viewing the recording, you will have the option to view the written transcript of tonight's hearing. You will also be able to select closed captioning, which provides options for auto-translate into languages other than English, such as Spanish. Thank you again for your participation in tonight's hearing. If you have any questions about the process for submitting comments, contact either me, Douglas Fine, or Tom Hanna, our air permitting chief, at the email addresses and phone numbers listed on the screen. Tonight's hearing is now closed, and the Zoom call will be ended. Good night.